Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, April 27th morning's study session for Mesa City Council. All of our council is present with the exception of Councilmember Duff, who is traveling and is excused. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, May 1 meeting. So council, if you could please refer to that document. Let us know if you have any currently, it looks like everything is on consent, but any questions or any additional information regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Brady?
Scotty, I think we would like to give you a presentation update on item 6C.
6C. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Butler will come forward and just kind of give you an overview of what's included in the MOU with the representative group from police.
Thank you for your hard work on this, Mr. Butler.
Good morning, Mayor and council. We're glad to bring forward the first agreement under the new voter-approved charter amendment allowing for meet and confer in the city of Mesa. So we, first of all, I want to, before we talk about some of the highlights of the agreement, just want to really send our thanks and appreciation to Glenn Pearson, who's in the back of the room, and the executive board, and his members at the Mesa Police Association. They've been great to work with. They're obviously fighting hard for their members and, but it's great. I've been negotiating for the city for a long time, usually down at the Capitol where it's a more adversarial relationship. And so it's great to be working with a group that shares the same goals and the same thing, which is to do everything we can as a city and as an organization to look out for the men and women in the Mesa Police Department and for everything that they do. So we're happy to bring forward an agreement that the city has reached with the Mesa Police Association for a three-year term. What Terry Overby and the HR staff were able to do was a market analysis, looking at where we are relative to our peer police organizations here in the Valley and our peer cities. Because of where we are right now, as we all know, compensation's been something that all departments across the Valley have been looking at over the last few years, we were able to settle on a market adjustment that will take our officers and sergeants to a very competitive position relative to their peers. So for police officers, if approved by council, they would receive a 7% salary adjustment in July, and then those of the rank of sergeant would have a 6% salary adjustment. On top of that, over the three-year term that we're proposing for this agreement, each year, officers and sergeants would be eligible for a five-year step increase, a merit increase. So assuming they received a successful or a meets on their performance evaluation, that they would be eligible for a 5%, up to a 5% increase, depending on where they are in their range. In addition to that, we've agreed that in the spring of 2005, so at the end of the second year of this three-year agreement, we would conduct another market analysis to see, again, where we are relative to our peer organizations, and then make any adjustments and bring forward to council any adjustments that would go into effect for year three of this agreement, just to make sure that over the life of a multi-year agreement, we're not falling behind and that we're staying competitive in the market. And just one note to help in recruitment efforts and to make sure that we are staying competitive in this very competitive market of trying to get the best recruitment of police officers, we are adjusting, proposing to adjust the police recruit rank, which is what, as someone's in the academy, but they've been hired by the city, but they're not a fully sworn officer, we're proposing to bring that pay up to the level of a police officer. So that typically, I believe it's 10 months into the process, if I'm not mistaken, 10 months into the process after they finish the academy and they've become a full-on-the-street police officer, usually their pay is adjusted at that point. But what we're proposing is that as soon as they join the force and they enter the academy, that they receive the same pay as a police officer does. In addition to the compensation issues, we are proposing to increase the city's contribution to the deferred program that we have for MPA members. Right now, it's 1% of an officer or sergeant's salary, along with a $10 per paycheck contribution from the employee. What we are proposing right now is to increase that to 1.5% of the salary. But along with that, the commitment from the officer or sergeant would increase to $30 per paycheck. So we're hoping to encourage more of our folks to save and to contribute towards their retirement, which is a win-win for the city and for the officers and sergeants. In addition, staffing on the weekend can sometimes be a challenge. That's a challenging shift for our officers and certainly just the unique demands that happen and the higher call volume that occurs during our weekend shifts. So what we are proposing in conjunction with MPA is a six-month pilot program, that we would look at some enhanced premium pay for those working weekend shifts. We want to see if that moves the needle in what we're seeing as far as attendance, and also it could have the benefit of encouraging some of our more senior officers to try to bid for those weekend shifts. Certainly, that pay could be an incentive at a certain stage of their career in order to see them try to bid for those weekend shifts where that might not be occurring right Keeping in line with wanting to make sure that we have boots on the ground and folks out on the streets, we're proposing to continue and expand the current perfect attendance incentive that we've had for the last, I believe, two years with public safety. This would allow for those who do not call in sick or take dock time over a six-month period, they're eligible for a $500 incentive. And right now, that's a one-time, one-time-a-year incentive, and that is being expanded for twice a year, so that they're eligible to up to $1,000 if they have perfect attendance. But it's broken into two six-month periods. The last thing I'll note is we had several other items that, under our new charter provision, we are not MOU-eligible. Those are things that we're going to be proposing through an update of the personnel rules. And I don't know if Mr. Brady wants to comment on that right now, but we'll have various provisions that you'll be seeing at a future time.
We'll bring all, excuse me, we'll bring all those to council. And we probably may even have some of our own tweaks, Terry, that we want to add. So we'll just bring that, we usually bring that as a package to the council, but we're committed to bringing those forward to address the concerns and make some changes. There are some things that we're looking at citywide that we've never implemented before as far as parental leave for mothers having babies and fathers and supporting that, so we're looking at implementing things like that. So those are just some items that we'll be bringing to council in the future.
And none of that is under MOU?
It's not, because it'll be addressed as a personnel rule and it'll cover the entire city. So we...
And with that, Mayor and council, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Ms. Fieldsbury.
Hi, thanks. I'm very much in support of that, so. We don't have this presentation correct? Did I miss it somewhere?
No, no, that's not. We just want to give you the highlights.
Okay. I was going to go back and look at something and then I realized...
Sure, sure, I'm glad to scroll back.
And I know, maybe you said this, when you do the market analysis and citywide comparison, did you say where we try to be? Are we trying to be number one? Are we trying to be number two? Like, where are we trying to shoot for?
I didn't, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah. Mayor and councilmember Fieldsbury, we've avoided trying to position a certain number because, you know, that becomes the arms race that you see happening across the Valley right now, which, you know, is sometimes a challenge for cities to manage. What we've said and what we've committed to, you know, our officers and sergeants is that we're going to be top-tier and that we're going to be very competitive, above-market. And these agreed-upon salary adjustments do that.
We'll be in the top-third, for sure. I think what we've done for both groups makes us competitive. We're not going to be number one, this is not going to work, because there are communities that say that they will always be number one, so they'll, but we're going to be in the top tier, that top tier. So that means we're probably going to be at the second highest or the third highest. And I think consistently, we're, and I don't want to say that because it'll be used against us the next time we have these discussions. Mr. Brady said we're always going to be number two. No, we're going to be in the top-third. That's been our philosophy for many, many years. And that allows us, if we're making those adjustments every couple of years, then we're very competitive in that grouping. I would say what we're offering right now, and the thing is, I have to say, as we looked at the numbers today, we're going to be very, very competitive in that top third tier, sorry. But every other city's going to go through this too, and they're probably going to say the same things, so it's just going to be this continuous review.
And since we're kind of unique in that we provide the lifetime medical, is that incorporated into comparing that analysis with the others?
Thank you so much for asking that question. That's an awesome question.
You didn't set me up for that, I guess.
Well, Mayor, council...
I mean, that's huge.
No, no, thank you so much for asking, because I'm currently going around and meeting with all of the city employees today, or this month, sorry. And one of the questions I get is, are we competitive? And what's the city's philosophy? And Scott has really articulated it pretty well here, as you can see, and how we've addressed issues. Our first issue is we want to be competitive on the recruitment side, right? We want to recruit the best employees to come to Mesa and start their careers in Mesa. So that's the first thing. So we're very competitive on that beginning salary. The second part of this is because of the changes in state law regarding sick leave and how we, as an employer, really don't have any oversight on how and when someone can use sick leave, it has become a significant issue in keeping shift staff, crew staff, you know, people showing, you know, getting people to show up, because they can use the sick leave without really, you know, have a doctor's note, there hasn't, you know, there's really all that's gone. So now we've kind of had to pivot to this idea of how do we create the incentive to show up to work, right? And not use the sick leave. And so you've seen some of that here, and you'll see that consistently. And we're looking at that even citywide, we're working on a policy. So there's recruitment, be very competitive on the recruitment side, create incentives to come to work, to have this kind of like perfect attendance concept and not burn up your sick leave, and create opportunities so that maybe after you've accumulated so much sick leave, you can convert it to vacation time, which you could either use or you can sell back. And on the backend, what you're talking about, is also making sure we have the opportunity to keep, after employees have been here for 15-plus years and have great experience, we want them to continue with the city of Mesa. And that's where we think the lifetime health benefit, if they will reach their 20 years plus, they have to be retirement-eligible, that allows us to keep them on for a longer career, which obviously helps keep more staffing on the streets. And as I explain all that, and even just our health benefits program, that commitment by the city is unique. There's no other city that we're aware of in the Valley that does that. And so that is our competitive advantage in that whole package. And it is a very expensive benefit, but we're trying to do everything we can to plan for that. It's going to be, you know, the future liability for the city, so we're trying to make sure we address that early on. But to your point, and when people talk about these packages for compensation, it has to be that whole spectrum, right? And I'll say this boldly, and I'd like someone to prove I'm wrong, but we think from the compensation or health benefits package, our, now our, what we're doing with keeping people, incentives to come to work and that lifetime health benefit, we probably are at the top of any compensation package, I think, for anybody in the Valley. Now, part of the challenge is when you're recruiting someone, they're not looking at that health benefit.
They just look at numbers, right.
When we get them to that, after that 10-year, 15-year, then that starts to become an important part of that.
Okay, so obviously, in the marketing of trying to get recruits, we are talking about the big picture.
We're talking about the big picture. We focus a lot on the starting salaries and quality of life benefits. When people are getting closer to retirement, then we start really pushing that, you know, hey, stay here longer and you can, and it's helping retain, because you saw from, I think, police especially, how many officers we have been losing a couple of years ago that, you know, were retirement-eligible. We're hoping that this will, and the chief has expressed that he's heard from more officers now, like, well, I guess I'll stay a couple more years or five more years so I can get that health benefit, too.
That's huge. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Well, you know, I want to applaud management for working with police. I think this is fastest I've ever seen an MOU come across the table, right?
It is.
It's been very...
Well, it's two things. Scott, and then Scott has an incredible group of support behind him, and MPA came to the, you know, we kind of had a really good kickoff in starting, so we didn't get, you know, they didn't get everything, we, you know, there's things here that we stretch ourselves, but it does, we think it's a very competitive package, and we appreciate the tone of the conversation, too.
Good, I appreciate that. Having been on the other side of public safety, I just know that this is very important for the foundation of our police department, and especially when you talk about recruits and getting them in there and raising their base pay up, because, you know, it's hard to go in as a recruit, and you probably take a cut in pay to do that. And so raising that up, I think, will, you know, just solidify that we are a top-notch department, and then having all the other benefits analysis there. And I really like the fact that if you, you know, do not call in sick and get, or dock, that you can get an incentive performance pay for that, because, you know, in my career, I mean, I was maxed out on everything and I didn't have these benefits available, but I would have been receiving, you know, the $500 every six months, maybe $1,000, but...
Let's take a longer...
12 years too late. But I appreciate now Mr. Pearson and his team and city management, again, moving forward with this, because this, again, like I just want to just say, it just builds our foundation as a department, and the morale of our department knows that management is working with our sworn personnel. So with that, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mayor and councilmember Freeman, Mr. Brady is exactly right. I'm the one sitting up here, but Terry Overby, Candace Canastrano, Sam Schultz, Ashley Scott, just a few of the employees that have been working hard on this. Assistant Chief Dan Butler has been the police department management rep that's helped us through this process as well, and so it's really been a team effort. And of course, like we said, the collaborative effort with MPA, they've been great to work with, you know, because we're all on the same team, we're all working for the same goal, and that's been a really healthy dialogue.
Okay, I have one last question. So you used the comment, Mr. Brady, retiree-eligible for lifetime health benefits, but if you are a new recruit and you get hired, what's the average age of the 23 or 4?
I believe in PD when we've looked at it, and Sam can correct me, but I believe it's around 25 for a police...
It's around 23, 25 for a police officer.
Okay, between 23 and 25 for a police officer.
So that would mean you would not get that benefit full-time until you're 55?
Until you're retirement-eligible and 20 years.
And 20 years. What's the retirement-eligible age?
55 under, Mayor and councilmember Freeman, under the changes that were instituted, phased in over what's referred to as Tier 2 and Tier 3 of PSPRS, that's now 55 years of age, along with 25 years of service before someone in public safety is eligible for retirement.
So if someone chooses to retire early, they wouldn't have that healthcare lifetime benefit, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to define. All right, thank you.
Mr. Summers.
Just two things, since we're on this slide right now. Police officer 7%, sergeant 6% increases, where are we on, are we concerned much about pay compression at this point?
No, we, well, we look at, so you're just getting a percentage, but we have all those schedules in front of us and we're looking at that. And that is, that's been, we've had to be aware of that, too, yeah. Sometimes these things adjust differently. I think there was one year where we just did sergeants, and then we had to catch up with police officers. We just tried to look at the market, and I think we try to be aware of that concern also.
But we try to keep a healthy, what, 5% between the ranks and promotions?
Exactly. And Mayor, councilmember Summers, under this plan, there's still an even bigger buffer than the 5% that you referred to. It's closer to 9% between an officer and a sergeant right now, and that...
I want to take sergeant's...
Yeah. That fluctuates a little, you know, depending on the market, but right now, I believe this has us at about 8.8%, and that has fluctuated every time.
It has been an issue in the past, and I remember it's been brought up to us, and we've had to address that in the past. So it's something we have to keep watching.
But that was addressed when you...
Yeah, I think we addressed that a couple of years ago, Glenn? I don't know, yeah, I think, so we're, we get it because we were having our time getting promotions to sergeant, and one of the reasons was, well, you know, I can just keep working overtime as a police officer and make as much money, so.
Yeah. Okay, so as long as that was addressed, and then the other question was on the, I don't know, what do you want to call it, sick leave incentive and not calling sick? Policing is a dangerous occupation. Some of these folks who are sick are actually injured in the line of duty. So how are we addressing, how are we going to implement the $500 incentive for folks who maybe were injured in the line of duty?
Mayor, councilmember Summers, and I welcome Terry to come and correct me if I'm going to state any of this. My understanding, though, if they are, if they're injured and they are assigned to maybe a different assignment during that time, during their recovery...
Light duty.
Yeah, light duty, this would not count against them in that case.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And just so you know, we have, we've already implemented this as a pilot program recently, and so we felt like the response to this was very positive, and so that's why we're continuing to expand the program.
Yeah, I like this program. I think it's a really innovative idea to do exactly what it's trying to do. I just want to make sure that, you know, the rank of file and the women who are on the front lines, if they're injured in the line of duty, aren't going to lose a $500 thing because, God forbid, they got hit in a wreck or something like that, and it's not their fault.
Absolutely. And Mayor, councilmember Summers, as Mr. Brady said, right now, the program is a one-time incentive. We've expanded that kind of for two bites at the apple. In addition to that, program that's already existing that we're not even discussing today is for officers in the field in certain critical positions within public safety, we have a vacation hours incentive for perfect attendance, and that's on a rolling basis throughout the year. And so that's a separate and distinct program that allows those for critical staffing areas in order to get, you know, a shift or several hours off based on their perfect attendance as well. So we've tried to give different avenues to allow employees that, in those critical areas, to find ways to get additional break or in this place, in this respect, compensation.
Yeah, as long as it's implemented in that way, I'm really comfortable with it. So thank you for considering that, first of all, that what they do is hazardous and it's not their fault if they get hurt. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? I'll just say, this is a lot of fun to see meet and confer working so well, see the level of good faith between MPA and city. To me, this seems like at an all-time high. So Glenn, I hope you'll let your board know how much we appreciate the good faith that you brought to this process, and Mr. Butler and everyone. Mr. Brady, thank you so much for, it's great to have a no-drama situation going on right now. And we know workforce is a big challenge in everything that we do, and I'm glad that our voters have supported this with the public safety sales tax, and the challenge now is getting, is recruitment. And so I'm glad that we're able to be so competitive. So thank you to everyone who's worked so hard on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, any other staff...
No, I think that was one we wanted to...
Okay. Great, council, yes, Mr. Summers.
I just have one thing on the, one quick question, actually, from Mary. Item 7A, it's a zoning case, Power &amp; Elliott commercial, and I noticed that P&amp;Z Board recommendation had a dissenting vote, but I don't know, I didn't, it wasn't clear why.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. That's correct. So Planning and Zoning Board member Peterson voted against it. Most of his discussion focused on the parking for the site, and there was an SUP for a parking reduction that was granted, and so that was really what his concerns were through the discussion. When he voted no, he didn't specifically say that that was the reason, but that's what we would.
And then, one of the uses is a fitness center?
That's correct.
So that's going to be in and out? And then it's on Power Road, so there's a bus route up and down Power Road?
That's correct.
So there's transit? All right, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Reddian.
I have a question on another item, 5A, the food-to-energy program. See, there's a, is it a, there's phase one, and then there's another phase? What's the timeline of the actual kind of production?
Let's be clear about what phase one is on the flare, and then the food, kind of just explain.
Okay, sure. Good morning, Mayor, council. Scott Boucher, the Energy and Sustainability Director here at the city, and I'm joined by Lauren Whitaker, who's a special projects manager and has been working on this project for many years now. So I'll turn it over to Lauren, she can answer your question.
Okay, I just kind of want to give you the overview, and I'll use this chart I've posted up here to review it. So we have the food-to-energy program. The way that this works is we would collect food waste from commercial businesses and then pre-process that material into a slurry that we could put into our digesters at the Northwest Water Treatment Plant. We then would create renewable natural gas off of that product. Currently, the water treatment plant does create gas, but it is being flared, so we're capturing that gas and then putting it into our natural gas utility as a commodity and using that to fuel our collection vehicles. And you can see the circular economy in the chart we've listed, shown here. So this is the food-to-energy program overall. Currently, we're in phase one, which is what we're calling flare-to-fuel. So the first phase of the project is sort of this bottom half of this chart. We're going to, at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, we're going to collect the gas that's currently being flared, and then we're going to upgrade that gas, put it into our natural gas utility, and show it to use in our collection vehicles. So that's the first phase, and that's what 5A refers to. We are at 100% design for that project, and then we're looking at potential...
Construction will begin. Can you just say, this is, because I appreciate you're doing, this is clear, we could do this without the food, put the food aside for a second, but the project is capturing existing gas that is a byproduct of the waste that is extracted out of the wastewater system. So even if we don't go to the food, I'm just kind of trying to separate it, it's the current gas byproduct that is coming out of the digesters today that we're going to capture with this project. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, and then, okay, and then keep going from there.
Yep, so then that's, like I said, that's the bottom portion of this. So then, I think we'll skip a few slides forward to the, moving forward. So the next steps would, the next phase would be looking at doing a pre-processing facility and constructing that facility, designing and constructing it. That facility would have a scale house that's similar to a transfer station, where we have partners in our city of Mesa collection vehicles that would drop off food waste, and then we would process that into the slurry. So it would include all of those kind of, similar to a transfer station there.
But Lauren, none of, that is a future project that we're coming back to council for.
Correct.
I mean, this has, we have to start with this. Yeah, this has funding, so we were here when we discussed the Climate Action Plan funding last Monday at study session. This is funding for design, is in place with the Climate Action Plan funding for beginning design of the food waste processing facility. But with GMP 2 that is on the agenda for Monday's council meeting, that'll begin the process that will now go into construction this summer on the flare-to-fuel project, taking the existing biogas, upgrading it, putting it into the natural gas utility. Construction will begin this summer and will be complete, what are we looking at for construction timing?
Mid-May 2024.
So mid-May.
Or mid-2024.
So it's summer 2024, we'll then actually go live and start putting renewable natural gas into our utility.
How much is that, how much are we talking about as far as the amount that will be captured currently from what we have?
From the gas? It's about 20% of the usage of the natural gas utility. From the gas, it's about 20% of the usage of the natural gas utility.
30% approximately of our our city operations usage.
That's what the.
So 30% of that.
Of what we currently use in our fleet? Or what we what was the number? I'm sorry, you said a number.
So 20% of overall city operations use of natural gas, 30% of our solid waste fleet of natural gas vehicles.
Because the the solid waste utility and that fleet of trucks is the largest customer that we have as far as a city customer for the utility. So when we look at it in comparison, it's that that's a large amount of our usage is those 70 plus trucks that are being fueled six days a week.
Did you want is that the answer you're looking for? You're just.
Yeah, I was trying to understand, yeah. So I know in the past presentations, they talk about up to like 40% of our fleet could be be utilizing this type of.
Yeah, and so those numbers, what what has happened since that time is the fleet continues to grow with solid waste as we're adding more routes and adding trucks to it. So that percentage has gone down a little bit on how much it would be. The same amount of gas is being produced, but when you look at it from a percentage wise, that's what's dropped it down a little bit.
And then, once we add the food waste, what's that anticipation kind of estimates that will provide in addition to what's being flared right now?
So there's many variables, but it's approximately between 70 and 80% of the natural gas use of the city operations.
And that's going to depend. So when we get to the flare to fuel project, it'll be a process of slowly ramping up that food waste that's going into those digesters. It's not something where day one, we can just open up a valve and drop 20 tons of food waste into there. It's going to be, and this goes back to our feasibility study, where we'll slowly increase the amount of food waste and kind of track those indicators that we learned through the bench scale testing that we did with ASU to make sure. Because the number one thing that those digesters need to do is be able to treat municipal sewage that comes to them today. So it'll be a process, as we've talked with others that have done this across the country. That can be a years long process of, you know, making sure that you're feeding in the right amount.
But we I think we're I got comfortable with just the ability to capture what's happening today that otherwise we're just burning off. That's referred to the flare part, right? So now we can capture more of that and use that for beneficial use to offset the the gas we're having to purchase on the market. So that's just that alone, this phase that we're going into right now, we think, you know, that's that's worthwhile. And then this idea that after, you know, beyond that, that we could figure out how to use the food waste to also then increase that will be even, you know, just on top of that. But I think each phase stands alone as a great opportunity for us.
I know this costs quite a bit, but is there any cost kind of like a cost comparison as far as how much we're recovering?
Right.
Because I'm assuming we pay we pay to get the CNG, right? So any cost recovery costs there?
Yeah, Lauren, send the cost benefit analysis.
Yeah, so we have a detailed economic model that we created through the feasibility study. One of the things that it there is a market that fluctuates of incentives, so it does change a little bit over time. That's through the renewable fuel standard with the EPA. They create what is called RINs, and those are assigned a value. But currently, we're looking at an approximate 10 year payback for the flare to fuel project, that first portion.
The first portion. All right, thank you. This is an exciting program, I think, capturing what it's already being burned out burned out, right? So and then adding the food waste later, I think it's a it's very exciting, I think, for us to move on in this direction. So thank you.
I was just going to see if you could show me on the circular diagram then where does phase two come in and where does phase three come in?
So phase two would be actually at the very start with the business.
Okay.
So we would collect that food waste from the business and then take it to the pre-processing facility over there on the right hand side.
And we already talked to businesses or are we have people interested in this? Or we're not, I know we're not really close to that yet, but.
There is a lot of interest from the community, and I think we have a lot of potential partners and interest in it overall. We have not secured anything in detail moving forward, but there are partnerships available.
Well, you did your pilot program.
Yeah, in the feasibility study, we worked with United Food Bank, we worked with BASH's, Mesa Public Schools, just to name a few of the partners that we had, ASU. All of them were excited to have an opportunity to recycle their food waste. So we do feel like there is going to be demand. Even where we're looking at placing this facility, there'd be an opportunity that if we didn't have enough we were collecting at Mesa, you could have other cities that could bring you or privates that could bring you that material. We could charge a tipping fee and be able to take that, so.
Yeah, that was one of my questions. What how's that relationship look? Who pays who in that relationship?
Which relate?
For the food.
Okay, so it would still be there would be a cost of service to it. So you would still have a charge for if the city is coming and picking up the food waste, there would be a charge the same as what we do with recycling now or with solid waste, that there would be a charge associated with it. We have to work through the details, obviously, of what that rate would be as we move forward with the program. And then others that we as we've looked at, you know, other models of folks that have done this across the country. If you have, say, a private group waste collector that has a food waste route, that they would come and you would charge them a tipping fee the same as what we're charged when we go to a private transfer station or, say, the Salt River landfill. We're paid a per ton charge. So it would be something along those lines. And again, we'd have to figure out what that charge would be as we get through the design portion.
Mr. Freeman.
Sounds like we need a different color of barrel, you know, the blue, green and black barrels. So now we need a food barrel or a food bin and a large garbage disposal.
Well, I think you might be prophetic. At some point, you know, our children might have a food barrel.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. This is a lot of fun to see RNG instead of CNG, right? And this hits on all of the cylinders for our Climate Action Plan by reducing what we're taking to the landfill, by relying on renewable energy. So this is a lot of fun to see. How common is this? Are there a lot of the city council meetings right now taking place where they're talking about food to flare or flare to food energy programs? Or are we really one of the few people doing this?
In Arizona, I would say we're one of the few that are doing this right now. There are discussions, I think, with some other cities that that may be moving forward, but we're ahead of that. In California, where they've had an organics ban that has gone into place, this has been happening for a while. And that's where we've gone and had our most contacts with folks that have been doing this for years is in California. Simply, there's two reasons. There's a regulatory driver behind it, and then their tipping fees are much higher than what we pay here in Arizona. So that drives it from a financial model also.
And I will just add to that, there there has been a huge increase in renewable natural gas projects in general as the incentives have increased federal incentives for these types of projects. So we are seeing it throughout the country that a lot of people are evaluating and looking at these types of projects.
Very cool. All right, thank you very much. Thanks for your hard work on that. Council, any other questions regarding Monday night's agenda? All right, we do have some important items on the agenda for this meeting as well. So let's move on now to item 2A, which is a presentation and to provide direction on the Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities Department budget, including an update on the Serine House. Andrea, good to have you back.
Good morning. Thank you.
Tammy, as well.
Tammy Davenport, Andrea Moore, Parks, Rec, Community Facilities Director. And with me is Tammy Davenport, our Senior Fiscal Analyst. But let's get our PowerPoint started here. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're presenting our budget overview for our entire department, Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities. But to start with, we have a reminder of our mission statement and our commitment statement. So our department is so broad in scope. Our mission statement is as well to try to capture all the things we do to create a healthy and vibrant community by providing exceptional experiences and services to those who live, work and play in Mesa. And our three primary commitment statements are to be responsible stewards of all the different types of facilities we take care of, providing safe spaces for people to work and recreate, and working together to focus on services for the ever changing needs of our community. It's continuing to evolve as people have different types of interests, but we continue to pivot with them. We have as our primary goals for next year's budget to continue working through optimal staffing levels for the needs of our department, keeping up with the cost escalations that we've been talking about for months and providing and maintaining quality and exceptional programming for the community. I thought I'd start with a couple of our performance measures. We are still seeing an incredible interest in all the public programs that we offer, special events, commercial facilities, programming across the board. So the first two slides are our convention center and amphitheater, the first one being number of events and attendance. And the rightmost bar showing 2022. We're seeing just incredible interest in both concerts and bookings in the convention center. And so just by frame of reference, that final bar in 2022, 500, over 500 events with over 252,000 in attendance over the course of both the convention center and the amphitheater last year. And that's calendar year. The next slide shows our revenue and expenses. And so again, for 2022, we're seeing 8.4 million in revenue. That includes that shuttered venue grant that was part of the post pandemic reemergence for the amphitheater. So it was $1.8 million through the Small Business Administration where we've been able to cover the cost to bring that facility back into production and do some improvements with it at the same time. And then we have 6.5 million in expenses. So whereas before, pre pandemic, we were just slightly higher in expenses than revenue because the interest in the convention center and amphitheater in particular have been so high, we're making money on that facility right now.
So Andrea, before you leave this slide, I mean, I get that we're recovering from the pandemic and we're getting back to normal. But this, something's happened here. We're now twice where we were as far as revenues pre pandemic.
Mayor, that right, that's the point we're making is that the interest in bringing things to Mesa, the downtown Mesa environment, the amount of interest in putting things at the convention center and the interest in concerts at the amphitheater, outdoor venue. People are very interested in outdoor concerts. We have a capacity up to 5,000 there. So it's very popular. And yes, it is exceeding by far pre pandemic levels.
Andrea, though, you said, is the grant showing up in that last year?
It is.
Okay, so Mayor, I would suggest we look at.
Our revenue without the grant was 6.6 million.
So it's still impressive, but really, the slide before is actual activity with the revenue that's associated. But so it's it's well, there one's going to follow the other. So we're getting a lot more just attendance in our facilities, and with that comes the additional revenues, so.
So is this part of just the renewed activity in downtown Mesa, and that's reflected in more demand? Or I just wonder what's changed about the market? Were the demand were revenues twice what it was pre pandemic?
I think people just want to get back. I don't know, Andrea, they've been booking a lot of shows and a lot of conventions.
They have, but it's not my point is it's not just the concerts. The concert, the number of concerts has increased exponentially that from prior years for sure. But also the bookings in the convention center have increased. Our staff is doing an amazing job of marketing the facility, putting together proposals in conjunction with the hotel and Visit Mesa and the convention center to provide just an overall picture of joint space that we have available across both venues.
We have the State of the City event that brings out thousands of people.
There was that, yeah.
This might be a good indication that we need a renovation of our convention center and amphitheater, right? So if it's this popular.
What you talk about the master, the.
Sure.
You were going through, yeah.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Spillsbury. We are looking at doing a master plan for the convention center. We do think there's some additional markets that we can tap into for the facility, but also that would drive additional improvements. So it is an aging facility. It's very ready for some investment. And we've looked at having some additional pre-function space added on to the main hall, improving the outdoor area to facilitate conference dinners out in the because our weather is so amazing to capitalize on that a little bit more. So we are just beginning. We funded and are getting ready to start an RFP process to create that master plan to help guide what we do with the facility next for improvements.
And we'll bring that back to council and talk about a schedule because and also eventually, we also need to talk about some items in the amphitheater in the back space, the amphitheater, the green room and some of that space too. So we'll be bringing that back to council.
All right, thank you.
The next one is our 2022 program enrollment for recreation. And again, we're seeing just amazing interest in all of our programs. Aquatics, as usual, bypasses the enrollment in all of our other programs. So that's the bar at the top where we saw about 31,500 people in 2022 across all of our seasons participating in our aquatics programs. And just for reference, over the summer, that's the middle orange portion, 15, almost 16,000 enrollment in our aquatics programs last summer. And then looking at the bottom chart, that's the rest of our programs. Like I said, the scale is a little bit different. You see school break camps in that longest line in the middle of 6,000 over the last year. And that's after school programs. That's our summer recreation programs, both in our centers and in our satellite facilities. But overall, just interest in enrollment in our programs is going up. We started summer enrollment on Monday for this coming summer, and the trend is continuing. Lots of interest in all of our programs there.
Andrea, before you before you leave this slide, my family is painfully aware that registration was Monday because I think most of the people at a lot of, I mean, the supply and demand are not in sync here, right? I mean, you got to set your clock early and get up and hope that you get in, you get your kids into the program, which is a nice problem to have unless you're one of those families that didn't get in, right? So how are we doing on that? Are all of our pools up this summer? Or do we have challenges because of lifeguard staffing or just some aging facilities? Can can we bring another pool or two online to respond to that demand?
Mayor, all of our pools are online. We are fully staffed for the summer. The hiring process is ongoing. Every lifeguard that we can bring in helps us provide opportunities for rentals and other outside of public swim opportunities. And yes, I do think there's an opportunity to address the aging pool at Fremont. That is our oldest pool built in the 70s.
Up and running?
It is up and running. We're continuing to limp it along, but it is definitely in need of attention. And then in Southeast Mesa, we are not serving that community currently. And so I think there's an opportunity there as well. And along with the master plan that I mentioned for the convention center, we're also going to be starting a strategic planning process, a feasibility study for pools and what might turn into a possible question on a bond program.
So this is exactly the opportunity we'll probably share with council about future bonds would be pools and renovating pools, pools in Southeast Mesa. Yep, we know, yeah. So we hear it all the time.
Yeah, this is a great commercial for that because look how popular these programs are. I mean, over 30,000 folks are participating in them, and we're turning people away. And we don't have facilities in Southeast Mesa, so.
It's because when you're a mom with a bunch of kids at home all summer, it's the best thing in the whole world to have somewhere to go. You go to the library or you go to the pool. So we desperately need these programs.
But even if we do get a pool at Eastmark or some maybe more than one location out in Southeast, I'm just wondering, how do we respond to the to the supply demand issue this summer? Are we just that's just our lot? We're going to continue to turn families away because we we aren't going to be able to meet that demand?
Mayor, we are pretty close to capacity on being able to offer additional swim team opportunities and swim lessons, the public swim hours. The public swim hours are pretty well set, so we are running those and putting events in place to try to, like, we're doing two summer movies this year at the pools, some of those kind of opportunities to bring more people in. But it is definitely a tough balance. I will say the incentive programs that we implemented last year to encourage our part-time staff to join us and stick around for the summer have been very effective. We're very fortunate that we didn't have to close any of our programs or remove any of them because of staffing shortages. So we spent about $300,000 across all of our programs on part-time staff incentives, but it's working.
That's great.
You're right, we just need more, yeah, so.
Popularity is a problem sometimes. Mr. Hurdie.
On the youth sports, it seems low, or maybe it's driven by competitors. There's a lot of club teams, a lot of other leagues, but is that at capacity or as far as the amount of youth being served under youth sports? And what's the categories? Is it the baseball, flag football?
I'm going to ask Amy Maness to come up and join us to talk in more specifics. But Vice Mayor Hurdia, the youth sports only go in two seasons because the middle of summer is just too hot, and so that's part of it, but if Amy could elaborate.
Mayor and council, thank you for inviting me up here. Councilmember Hurdia, yes, we do have two seasons, but there are some limiting factors on youth sports activities. Most of our youth sports programs are volunteer-run, and so we have parents that come out and assist with having that program happen. And if we don't get enough volunteers, then the program cannot expand. So we do have staffing limitations and seasonal limitations. Field sports, when it's 115, we really don't want a lot of kids out there. But oftentimes, the volunteer process and the volunteers to get them to be part of the program, to expand it to different locations, sometimes is a limiting factor.
That's a driver as far as volunteer.
But Amy, while it may not be our program, right? We do, our fields get used by a lot of other community groups and leagues, is that right?
Correct.
So it's, I mean, it's not showing up on our count here, but our facilities are getting used, right? So it's not like-
Right, there is competition, like you mentioned earlier. There are a lot of private clubs or private leagues or leagues that are run by the school systems. So there are definitely competitors. There are a lot of programs. I think recently we, my staff, did a kind of survey, and there were at least 15 operators of youth flag football just in Mesa. So we're not the only gig in town, but we do have the best facility.
I was gonna say, because there, usually, you know, our programs are some of the more affordable pieces, the other-
Correct.
-are, you know, quite pricey.
Yes.
I pretty much live Monday to Thursday in a field out there. But, you know, I think, you know, youth sports, there's, you know, tons of people on a daily basis that are utilizing our fields. The other question is, I know in the past, the collaboration with the school district and the fields kind of been off and on, and what's the status of how we work with the school district in utilizing their fields or their facilities to potentially expand or meet the demand that we have with these programs?
Right. We do go through a request process with the district, so we request facilities, and if they have the availability, then we, since the city has an intergovernmental agreement with the district, then we can get priority usage of those facilities. But their programs will come first for their facilities. So we do use district facilities, there are gyms sometimes for like youth basketball, fields for programs in certain neighborhoods, definitely we do.
I'm sorry if you already said this, but class capacity for the programs, you said where majority of our classes are full or at capacity, or how, do you know that percentage?
It depends on the program.
Okay.
So when you come to like aquatics classes are a different size, you might have a max of six kids per instructor in an aquatics class, whereas a after-school program, the ratio is more like one to 10. So depending upon what the program is, the capacity level is a little bit different, and then where we're at with that capacity level is also different.
And so can we, go ahead.
Sorry, councilmember, go forth. So our programs are generally full. The special interest classes tend to be the ones that have lower enrollment. Our after-school programs and our summer camps are almost always full. Our adaptive program is full. Our aquatics program, you may end up with an open space here and there in the lessons, but for the most part, they're full.
Okay, okay. And then I had a question back on the convention center, amphitheater. Over 500 events for 2022, what's the breakdown on that convention versus amphitheater? I'm just curious, how many events or how many concerts in 2022 were there at the amphitheater?
2022 concerts, councilmember, go forth, we had 30 out of the 560 events. Generally speaking, oh, that was 2023, we have about, I think it's 15% of them are city events versus outside groups booking them. So still, by and large, it's outside groups coming in for the convention center.
Okay, but 30 amphitheater concerts for 2022?
Correct.
Okay, is that about what we normally do in a year?
That is much higher.
Is it?
In 18 and 19, we're at 11 and 12. 2021 is when we reopened in August, and just from August to the end of that year, we had 18. And then for the full year of 2022, about 30, so.
So does that include any other events that happen at the amphitheater?
There are other events, they aren't all concerts, some of them are rentals-
Oh, okay.
-that involve music, and sometimes there are other, like, a trade show that might want to be outside instead of in the main hall, or seating for a meal, or tents with different vendors for food. Those types of things can set up in the amp as well.
And is that within the 30?
It is within the 30.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
And then our last slide here, just with metrics. I know the top is a little small, but we wanted to show you what our tree inventory looks like in the park system and as we add our major capital improvements. So currently, with Lehigh Sports Park opening last fall, we're at just shy of 22,000 trees in the park system. We're getting ready to open Monterey Park expansion, and then the year after that, Red Mountain Park expansion. So by the time we're done with those major projects with tree additions, we'll be just shy of 23,000 trees in the park system. So that's not city properties, it's just in the parks and basins and sports fields. And then the bottom chart, wanted to show you, since the stage one water restrictions were put in place last May, in the parks, we're the biggest customer of water using, users in our landscape, we've saved about 8% comparing to the five-year average. So that's getting through 2020 when there was almost no rain, it's looking at average years of rainfall, that's that green trend line, is that five-year average, and then the blue is what we've used since the stage one restrictions were put in place. All right, so we have our expenditure summary for our department. We're at about $59 million in our total budget across all of our commercial operations, recreation programs, and facility maintenance. Overall, we've had increases related to the number of concerts that have come in, so those have been adjustments to our budget on the commercial at the top. We're getting ready to open the post, and so outfitting that location is part of our budget this year and going into next year. On our recreation side, our expenses are holding pretty steady with the exception of the incentives and the one-time pay that are part of the staffing levels in those programs. Park administration and resource management, so that's all of park maintenance, aquatics maintenance, park rangers, and our admin functions are all in that line. And we are seeing increases that we'll get to here in a second with recommendations on increasing our ranger force and the fleets that, fleet, the vehicles that come along with our additions in staff. As we've talked about cost escalations, those are going up higher than our initial estimates. And then park ambassadors that we'll talk about here in a minute. So those are the increases on that line. The bottom two are facility maintenance functions, and those are holding pretty steady with the exception of the increases going in place with our contracts, our service contracts that are being experienced across the board in the city. Then going on to the revenue summary on the next slide, overall, our department is expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 million in revenue across all of our functions, which are focused in commercial and recreation for the most part. And we're expecting that to be pretty steady in the coming year of what our current revenue looks like. Are there any questions on those two?
So we don't have any revenue from the post yet for this budget. Won't it be open and going or no?
It's, we're hoping it will open around July.
Yeah.
And that was the information we presented last time, but the revenue expected is lower than what would show up on here.
Oh, I see.
And I think we said last time too, that for that first, I can't remember, it was six months or nine months, we're really going to just allow people to come in and use it and probably keep our fees at a minimum just to kind of-
Okay.
-get comfortable using the space. Am I saying that correct?
Well, Mayor, council, the unknown of exactly when we can open makes it difficult for people to book weddings or any kind of social events in there at this point. So when we open, we expect it'll mainly be a soft opening with more internal or smaller events, things that don't need as much lead time for planning, and so the revenue from that would be lower. And then as we can build up and have people book those bigger events into the future, it'll hit in next fiscal year.
The end of the fiscal year, maybe we'll see some, but yeah.
So it's not really zero, but for this graph, it's zero. Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I'm just curious about the convention center amphitheater, the difference in the actuals and the budget, why is there such a difference in the estimate and the proposed next year budget?
Councilmember, go forth. So the year-end estimate is based on all those events that have coming in, that have been coming in. We budget just a base amount of revenue for the convention center and amphitheater, and then as events are booked and we realize that revenue, we increase it through contingency to update that capacity. So that's why it jumps up to 7.6 million by the end of this year. We didn't start the year knowing or understanding that our revenue would be that high.
But you kind of think it's going to continue, right, next year? Or you just-
We do, but we'll keep our current budget capacity at the 4.3, and then we'll go through an increase as needed. So our proposals, our enhancement requests are really focused on park security and engagement for the coming year. If you recall, last year, we had a focus on launching the special events office, that's been very successful, they're up and running and doing an amazing job of booking all those events. Our focus for the coming year is what can we do to get the neighborhoods back engaged and involved in really our downtown core parks where people are feeling more uncomfortable visiting right now. And so we're looking at a combination of programming and park ranger increases to help us achieve that. We're starting a trial program in Pioneer Park as soon as we can get staffed up for it, of running our mobile fun and fitness recreation unit Monday through Saturday, every afternoon from approximately 3:00 to 5:00. And with that, we will have park staff present, we'll have park rangers present, we're going to keep track of whether that does improve the positive uses of the park and who else is engaging with us in that mobile fitness recreation unit. The park ambassador proposal is also part-time staff that we're working on hiring, and that would be locating staff in higher-use times in higher-use parks where we have a lot of Ramada rentals to help facilitate when there's multiple rentals on a single day, making sure the garbage cans are emptied, but also helping us keep an additional set of eyes on those parks to make sure positive activity is occurring there. Then on the park ranger piece, we're looking at adding four park rangers for the coming year. We currently have 12, so this would get us up to 16. That's one lead ranger and three additional park rangers to help improve our response times, improve ranger safety. They're going out in pairs typically now, and just to increase the number of parks that they can target for their patrols. And then there's real-time crime center-linked cameras that we're working through. So the police department's budget includes adding cameras in eight parks, and the park rangers will help monitor those. They have access to those from their patrol vehicles to help keep track of when activity's going on.
Just a question for clarity, for the park security cameras, were security cameras connected to the RTCC also included in the two new libraries that we're building, one's in Eastmark Great Park and the other one is in Monterey? So are we going to have cameras connected as well?
Mayor, Councilor Summers, that's a good, we have been putting them on all our facilities, but I'll confirm that that's, that would be an easy thing for us to do. So I was going to make sure, I don't want to say absolutely, but we have been doing it on all other facilities, so it makes sense, but let me just confirm that. If not, we should be-
Yeah, focusing on the eight parks were the greatest problem for this particular budget item is, makes the most sense to me, but this is an opportunity just to expand it with-
I agree, I've put it on the libraries too, yeah, I agree.
Great, thank you.
And just to give some additional background on park rangers and how they've been spending their time with the 12 rangers we have, we have a couple of metrics on here. So the first is for the past year, that map shows where they've been spending their time. And so it's a heat map, the red and yellow are where they spend the most amount of time. And so it's about 90% of their time in the downtown corridor, which is what's making it difficult at our current staffing levels to spend regular patrol time out in the rest of the parks. They do go when there's calls for service, and that's the pie chart on the right. Pioneer's still being the highest number of calls for service that we receive, followed by Kleinman, yeah, can't see it from here, and-
River Green.
Yeah, just that word, the text is really small. Riverview, Guerrero Rotary, so those are the places where we're getting the most amount of requests for the rangers to be there. But in terms of regular patrols, it's still primarily the downtown corridor. The next slide, they are continuing to be a primary point of contact in the park system for people experiencing homelessness, and so there is a lot of interaction, services provided, attempts to refer out to social services with our community services department as much as possible when they're there.
Mr. Summers, and then just go for it.
Yeah, there's a great deal of increase here between 2000 and 2002. So is that due to an increase in the transient population, or is this a concerted effort to address the issue that happens to be impacting our parks?
Councilmember Summers, it's both. And so in the spring of 2021 is when we added five more rangers. We had six before that. So part of it is the increase in the ranger force, and by the end of the summer, they were up and running and fully trained, and that's where you see that jump by the end of summer 2021. But the number of homeless in the park system is continuing to grow, and that's why we're trying to put that engagement piece together to encourage neighborhood use back in the parks. And we're seeing facilitated recreation is the way that that seems to feel comfortable with people coming into the park system by having staff people there.
And did you maybe, did you experience less calls after you added five more? Do you, did you track that at all?
Councilmember, go forth. Not less calls, no. We're just trying to spend more time out patrolling.
Okay, so you didn't, you didn't experience a, like, yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't know that we would necessarily always get calls of homeless in the parks, but-
in the parks, but we're, I think the concern Andrea's always had is, it seems though to, not the right word is, it keeps people out of the parks from, how many, you know, the programming of families and kids showing up at the park, that becomes a problem.
I just didn't know if there was a metric that you used to add those, those additional. And then if you did, how it changed.
Well, it's on your coverage and how much time you get to each park, right?
Right. And, and definitely has become, our staff in the park system has become more concentrated over the past two years in the downtown corridor. And so it's not that we saw a lower call for service as much as that is where we need to concentrate more of our time.
And then my other question is that, the, out on the east side, there's one that has a little bit of more frequency, frequent visit. Which park is that?
Councilmember, go forth. That's Red Mountain Park. And the rangers do a lot of fishing programs at that park specifically, and that is what that's reflecting.
So some of this could be proactive, not necessarily reactive. So, and part of this is, is again, when they do the metric that we've talked about before, it's just if you only have so many rangers and so many hours, well, how many parks do they actually get to go drive by? And I know that we've increased the park rangers too. One of the things, one of the other reasons that we brought on the park rangers, we were having a lot of vandalism in the parks, and we were trying to address, that was an issue we were trying to address also. So just the presence of a park ranger driving around the parks, please, eyes on, I think that's been help.
It has been helpful. We have not seen a reduction in our vandalism. That is very high still. We're just able to address it as quickly as possible once we know it exists, so. It's, it's definitely been an increase in vandalism and an increase in homelessness and a decrease in neighborhood use of the parks, and those are the things we're trying to address. And then the last slide.
Mr. Freeman has a question.
You go ahead and finish, I can hold.
Okay.
I'd rather you finish.
The last slide about the rangers are the places that we have cameras existing and where they're planned through the police department's budget proposal. And those two pie charts relate to criminal activity that we're issuing citations for and seizing fentanyl and opioid drugs in the park system. So if you look at the numbers in those charts, they're low, but it's still our problem parks where we're wanting to concentrate more positive activity, staying in the downtown corridor of Pioneer and Kleinman primarily, and getting into some of the other downtown locations as well.
Seems like opioid and fentanyl contact, that, that seems like more of a law enforcement than ranger situation. So I mean, but I'm sure they're confronted with that, you know, perpetually. So are, are, are park rangers involved? What, what is their involvement in, in enforcing drug laws?
Mayor, they are bringing police department in when they need to, but because they're more active and out of their trucks, engaging with people in the park system, they are encountering. And so the police department actually asked us to start tracking when there's opioid and fentanyl contact by our park rangers fairly recently. This was the beginning, March 2022 is when we started tracking that. But it's because they are encountering that when they're out in the park system.
Interesting. Mr. Summers?
I know I'm a little bit out of order here, but are they? Are park rangers carrying Narcan?
Councilmember Summers, they are trained in Narcan now, and they do have it issued to them.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Mayor, while we're here, Councilor Summers, I didn't realize I had my lifeline over here on the cameras of our libraries, and Paulie affirmed that we will have cameras at Monterey and Southeast Library, so.
Yeah, that's great. I just, I think that's a great way to
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure.
To expand the inclusion on through other budgets.
No, that's fine. I just didn't realize, yeah, she was.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Mr. Freeman.
So, so thank you for your presentation. I think this is extremely important because, you know, we get emails, I think all of us council, about how important our parks are for our families, and some of the families choose not to go to our parks because of the uses that are not necessary in our parks. So I appreciate all, and when you, when you increase the amount of rangers, obviously the, the amount of interacts that you have on your metrics is probably going to rise up, because you're going to meet more people and, and keep them within check. I know some of the parks I drive by and I, I look over and I go, well, that's probably not authorized use activity there. However, I appreciate our rangers in having, my question is, is do you need more rangers than you currently of the four? Do you want to move forward with four? I know that
No, we have, we
You know, I think you're going to be ramping them up.
It's like asking, do we need more police officers? The answer is always yes.
Yes.
And so we're going to just keep trying every year to evaluate that, and probably you'll see more of these in the future, as we, especially as we open up new parks.
So I, I, I'm just thinking something out of the box here. Would it be possible to pair up a sworn officer and a park ranger at some point, just to help mitigate some of that that you're talking about? Because if you're having a call in some of the high use parks and just say, hey, you know, for today's patrol, this officer will work side by side with a park ranger. I'm just throwing it out there.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the park rangers do special projects, they're called with the police department about twice a month. And so they target a location where they want to have more interaction and intervention, and they go out together typically on their bikes, where they're getting more direct contact. But they are doing that. And then we have a really good relationship. Our rangers and the police department are very well-connected, especially the downtown district and the Fiesta District, which is where most of these parks are located. So there's a lot of interaction and crossover with their efforts and sharing of information of when there's something concerning going on, or people that they're on the lookout for, things like that. But generally speaking, having the rangers there and the, the citations and the fentanyl that they're seizing, that's the criminal side of the activity, but hanging out in the park is not criminal. And so that's why we're adding that engagement piece as well. So if there's folks in the Ramada, it feels uncomfortable for a family to go out and play at the playground, if it's right next, there's a group of homeless folks right next to it. The idea is that when we have staff there, that feels okay then. And that's what we mean by facilitated recreation. If we're having staff present, the neighborhood feels comfortable coming forward. What's happening with homelessness in the parks isn't illegal in all cases. It's where, the time is being spent during the day, but it feels better, it feels more comfortable, it feels safer when we're doing an actual recreation program at the same time.
Do they, the rangers have body cameras?
I don't think so.
No.
No, no body cam. That might be something to look in the future. I don't know if they're, they're allowed to do that, but something to help protect them and the event that they can capture, and then forward that video on to a sworn officer that responds. Because even our real-time crime center, we're asking residents to provide their use of their ring technology, if so choosing to be connected there. So that's just one thought. Thank you.
Mr. Summers?
Obviously, I'm going to, I fully support the addition of parks rangers and the technology think is going to be huge. But I, I worked in a downtown firehouse in Phoenix for over a decade, and in the, the main downtown park was part of our response area, right next to the library. So my firehouse is right around the corner. And we had daily, multiple daily calls to that library, to the parks. And they had, they had security and they would have a police officer by. But what really started to change things there, it was a combination. One was enforcement, so having park rangers is important, and law enforcement is important. But what you said in the very beginning of this presentation with activating the park, having events in these parks and celebrations, that's what really started to change things. Right? So it was a combination of things, not to mention having some, the appropriate services that we can connect people to. So I, I want to make sure that all of these parks, and particularly some of these ones that we don't even think about half the time, we, we have enough staff and dedicate enough resources to really making these parks about family, not just having some open green space that nobody cares about, because that's, that's when they become places where people sleep. So the ability to activate these parks is what's really going to change things for, for the better in the community.
That's my two cents.
Well, and it's hard for people to want to have an event at a park if that's what's there.
Yeah, it's a balance, it's a balance.
Trying to figure that out, because I'm guessing the day of Celebrate Mesa, Pioneer Park was probably cleaned out of any bad stuff going on. Because there was a ton, I mean, the whole park was active, there were still some.
But it's, but you're right. And I think that's exactly where Andrea is on this, is what her proposal is, is we need to make the parks still safe so the families and kids can come back to the parks.
I mean, Pioneer and Kleinman just are very concerning, right? Like that they, and Pioneer especially, that's like double the total callouts in a year period, even double than Kleinman. And so I just feel like, can't we have someone just at Pioneer all the time? Or, like, that's so concerning.
And that's the idea, I think this is the program to pilot it, and, and if it, if it's that successful.
So from three to five in the afternoon, someone would be there, but like, can we have even more of a presence of, I mean, does that help to have someone there?
I think, yeah.
Councilmember Spilsbury, but the ambassador program would help as well. And the police department presented on their downtown ambassadors.
Yes.
And they're looking at Pioneer as part of that corridor where they're going to work. We have the park ambassadors that we're looking at, but we would focus those resources on high use times, after school primarily, and the weekends when more of the neighborhood is focused on wanting to be in the park.
I just feel like we, we, the city and other entities have poured so much money into this area to really revitalize it, and then we still have this amazing park that's full of bad stuff going on. So, that I've heard from a lot of people, they're afraid to take their kids too.
Well, I think it's a fair point. We'll keep looking at, well, essentially it's creating more programs in the parks.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I think we can continue to look at that.
Well, dang it. I'd be careful. I mean, you have to consider it holistically, because if you have more events at Pioneer Park, they'll just go to Kleinman. I don't want to just push this to the next park over, so we have to think about how we tackle it all at once, and that's a, that's a complex challenge, so.
Thank you. Anything else you?
The next slide's just the summary of those adjustments. And then beyond that, it's looking at the Serine House. So are there any other questions about the budget presentation?
I just want to make a comment. I, I remember when I met with Mark for the first time when he was still doing this, and he told me the number, which I don't remember what it was, but of how many facilities you have to manage. I don't remember what the number was. It like blew my mind. It's thousands.
We have about 2,000 parks and about 450 facility buildings.
Parks, retention basins, buildings. I mean, when you think about 140 square miles of our city and all that you do, I just want to say a huge thank you, because your team is unbelievable that you can keep track of all of this, and then try to keep it all safe and clean. And I mean, and these really, all of these parks and facilities are what really bless our lives. That's the quality of life that we talk about in Mesa, is so much of our, of our parks and rec department. And so I just want to say a huge thank you. We take it for granted that we can go down to the park and have a family picnic or, or whatever, take the grandkids down. I mean, it's just such a great thing to have. I mean, the retention basins even that are everywhere that you have to try to keep track of and all the trash, and I mean, it's mind-boggling of, of everything you do. So I just wanted to say a huge thank you for that.
Hey, we're going to add another one right here.
Yeah, no, and let's do more.
Councilmember Spilsbury, thank you. My staff leadership team is here. They're amazing people, that none of this would happen without them.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm going to invite Jeff McVeigh up as well, to help talk about Serine House. So this is a building across from the convention center at 160 North Center. It's a Victorian-era home built in 1896 and on the National Register of Historic Places. And so Jeff and his team have been looking at what we can do to activate the whole property there. And from the facility side, we've been working on what we can do to make sure we're taking care of that resource and it's not deteriorating. So through the engineering department, on the next slide, we have an repair project that's underway, and that's mainly focused on repointing the bricks. The porch has become disconnected from the main building, so we're fixing that. There's some structural repairs that are needed in the basement. And so all of that is getting ready to start. It's about eight weeks of construction, and we hope to begin that in June this year. In addition, there's been a design concept process underway with Dig Studio. And so these initial things are about $400,000 in both the repairs and the design effort. And that's just, like I said, to protect the resource of the building itself. And I'll turn it over to Jeff to talk about what that design concept's looking like.
Thank you. Morning, Mayor and Council. I'll test your memory, go back several years with Imagine Mesa, when we engaged the, the community on what they would like to see going forward, future of the Mesa. And a lot of the, a lot of the answers were related to park and recreation facilities. It just so happened the idea of an urban agricultural and education center was the top, was the number four vote getter of all of Imagine Mesa. And that is actually, you know, those, several years ago is when the idea of, of using the Serine House as the facility to accomplish that goal was, was really kind of the genesis of it. So the first phase, and we, we've looked at this, the design concept as a three-phase project. Sorry, actually, yes, three-phase project. We have to get the house up to a, a basic standard of safety and structural stability so that we can then reuse it and hopefully highlight this as part of a, a, a more public activation. The first phase being the, the incorporation of an urban agricultural facility, including row crops, raised beds for herb gardens. Mayor will plant a lot of shade trees in this first phase across the entire site, so that when we get into early, later phases, the shade trees will be actually providing some shades, shade. We'll have to do utility infrastructure upgrades to be able to, to create a restroom facility inside the historic Adobe building on the rear of the lot. We'll need to include some space also. A large component of our agricultural opportunity is that education and engaging the community so they know where their food comes from, that they have a relationship with the, with the production of their food, and hopefully, you know, have the ability to go and do this on their own as well. That first phase, because it does have a lot of that site work, there are some, some drainage issues with the site that need to be addressed, a lot of the things that you won't see, so that does come with a cost of around $1.5 million for that initial phase. As we move on to the second phase, this was where we go into the more, I would say, we're actually trying to activate the site, bring people to the site. So on the north side, you'll see along Second Street, you'll see the food truck alley. That is using the existing right away, doing a curb cut and creating a little bit of a notch so that we can support three or four food trucks along the street, so we can engage and have pop-up events happen. We'll, we'll put in place, we put in place the Event Grove, which is again, another place where informal events could happen. The, the, the walk, which would be a nice promenade, well-lit, that goes in front of the building so that people can, you know, kind of stroll through the site. While we are looking to work with a private urban farmer to actually farm the site, the intention is that the site is open and that somebody could come to here, grab a, you know, grab a, some food from the, from the food truck, sit down and have a meal at a, you know, at one of the seating areas, but they could also get up and just walk around and, and see the farm itself and see the crops being grown. An education pavilion is an important part of this. This is designed for the area where our urban farmer can provide their education programming. These improvements now would allow this really to be used passively or formally. We could, we could do pop-up events that are, that are scheduled and programmed by either Parks and Recreation or other organizations that might want to use the space. But then as we go on to that third phase, this is where we really kind of make it a destination for, for pop-up and, and programmed events. This is inclusion of significant amount of structural shade to go to complement the, the trees, the shade trees. And that structural shade would go over the seating areas for the, for the dining. You see in that southeast corner where it has a harvest table and a fireplace, that would be a very nice location where, where programming can, can take place. And again, the idea is to let people know where their food comes from. Hopefully, we could have somebody that would want to do, you know, farm-to-table demonstrations where crops that are grown on the site are then turned into a, a meal, a dinner that, that people can, can, you know, buy tickets to and, and have, happen right here in downtown. The, that third phase, it, because there's so much structure involved, has, has an initial estimate of around $825,000. In, in total, over all four phases, including the improvements just to the Serine House, we'd be looking at a total estimated cost of just over three and a quarter million dollars. we'd be looking at a total estimated cost of just over three and a quarter million dollars.
Mr. Summers.
Had the ADA issues around there for access to the building and around. And what about fire protection systems for the house?
So Mayor, Councilmember Summers, ADA accessibility for the site itself is would be addressed as part of that first phase. The house, unfortunately, the house is not ADA accessible. Just in order to make it ADA accessible, we actually looked at this several years ago. It would take a significant amount of ramping to get up onto that porch level. So our intent in our program at this point is to to repair the house as it is functioning today without adding in that ADA accessibility.
My preference would be to to look at a budget to add it. If it's going to be open to the public, it should be open to everybody. Secondly, we should be putting fire sprinklers in this thing because it'd be a shame for it to be significantly damaged if we're going to invest this amount of money in it. We should be protecting it.
What is the house?
Yeah, I think we have to be. We have to look at the ramps. I think we're trying to also maintain the historical integrity of the building.
Yeah.
And so I think we can probably we can always, a historical facility, I think we have to be careful that we can provide. It's not intended that the building is really a programmed space. It's more of a that we're not bringing people in there to, you know, not going to have a kitchen or in there. It's really kind of more of a display. And so I think if we can find other ways to provide that alternative, I think we're just trying to, you know, right now, we're just trying to preserve the building so it doesn't fall, right? So we're down in the basement. We've realized we've got some structural issues. We are really trying not to touch the physical integrity of that building in any way to diminish the way it's preserved today. So I think we'd have to have a further discussion on that. I think the ramp could, that porch or patio that sits on top, I think that could be, that'd be very difficult, I think, to do that and maintain that integrity of that of that patio.
Yeah, I don't I don't know if an elevator would work, you know, the little.
A lift.
Yeah, lift. That's the word.
Maybe on the back end.
I think putting this in front of somebody that has expertise.
I think once you even get up into that space, just to maneuvering it, it's again, it's, we'll have to take a look. But I think we've looked at this in the past. But I think even if you get up on that porch and even getting inside the the house itself, it's.
Difficult.
It would be very difficult. But we can look at it again.
But the, I mean, I guess then the the primary thing before we would open that up is just making sure this thing doesn't burn down. Because.
Yeah, again, I think the sprinklers will have to evaluate what that does to the integrity of the interior. We haven't had, I mean, we've had this for a long time and we haven't done that. And again, we're not intending to put people in there for an extended period of time. So if it something were to happen like that, it would just be a structural fire. It wouldn't be a danger to individuals.
I think the concept is not to activate the house itself because it is so small and so old. And having, I I own a historic home quarter mile down the street. And we did an adaptive reuse where we made it ADA compliant and put in restrooms and widened doors.
Your office.
And you can't, if you do that to this, it would be one, it would be a bathroom. There would be nothing left of it. So I think that you just have to, this is preserving the house, but we're not going to activate the inside of the house because it's too small and too old to be really have a productive, other than occasionally opening it up for a historic home tour and letting somebody poke their head in. That's about the highest and best use you're gonna get out of that house.
I just don't want it to burn down.
Yeah.
So it's not currently open, right? Even though the sign says that it has tours or whatever.
Councilmember Spillsbury, the the house has not hosted a tour in several years. I think the last time it had hosted a tour was as the starting point to the historic home tour where you could pick up your tickets and your booklet and you could walk through the Serine House. It is a, it does have assets within the house that are owned by the Mesa Historical Museum. So and Mayor, absolutely correct, is our intent is to to kind of highlight the house in context to what its original history was. It was a farmstead house. So the idea of having it surrounded by a farm again in that context was really one of our our goals. And to be able to have the opportunity down the road, not to actually program it as part of the pop-up events, but to have the opportunity down the road where maybe the Mesa Historical Museum could have hours that are associated with our pop-up where they could have somebody at the house and allow people to walk through it. But again, to to the mayor's point, this is about an eight to 900 square foot house. And I'm not sure that it is possible to make it ADA compliant interior wise. And our goal is then to be able to make sure that the restroom that we do add into the Adobe building on the rear is ADA compliant and that the site itself, you know, you can wheel around the site itself. It has ADA accessibility as well.
And do for parking for events, are you thinking convention center parking and they walk across center or just down Second Street? Or what?
I I'm gonna expect a parking question from you every time I.
I know, I know. It's all I ever worry about, huh?
We are very confident that the on-street parking in the vicinity to the site, both north and south on center and then east west on Second Street will be more than enough to support any pop-up events. But if it does get to the level of of success where we're having a huge number of people, there is a great field of parking just across the street.
Yeah, but you have that parking right there in front on the street and it goes for quite a while.
Oh, right there.
On center there.
On center. So but just my last comment is that I'm very sad that Councilwoman Duff is not here because I would love to hear all of her thoughts about this. I'm sure she's really, really excited.
We shared this with her and.
Yeah. I mean, she lives right there and this is her district and this is her thing. So had to make that.
We'll be bringing this back as we go through the different phases. Is she in support?
I'm sure.
I'm just curious how big the site is. So like when I'm looking at this farm.
Yeah, it looks, it actually looks bigger on the paper than it.
It's a little over half an acre, I believe.
The entire site is a little over half an acre.
Yeah.
So does the city of Mesa have any connection with the Mesa Urban Garden? Is that a separate organization?
The Mesa Urban Garden is a is a separate organization. Yep. They.
It's our property, right?
Yes, it's on Sydneyland.
You do have a connection.
Yeah, we do have a connection.
We own the property.
And is that pretty popular?
Oh, the Mesa Urban Garden is, Councilmember, go forth. In the world of urban gardens, they very rarely last more than a few years because nobody maintains and nobody stays on top of it. The Mesa Urban Garden Board is active. They maintain it. They are doing a great job of.
Ten years? How long?
It's been more than 10 years at this point.
They've been doing it for a long time.
It's, I would consider one of the more successful urban gardens that exists in in the nation.
I guess the Impenada's next one.
And they have corporate sponsors that are that buy beds.
Yeah, well, they've been doing a great job.
Charity as well, yeah.
And I assume because we're hearing this, the Parks and Rec, this is your budget.
Yeah, Jeff and his staff took it on because it was, Council brought it up through Imagine Mesa. So the project development design, but as that gets built out, it will be handing it over for operating as a park.
Okay.
To the Parks Department.
And and I should mention, I I think I probably didn't touch on it enough. We will solicit for a private third party to be our urban farmer and our education provider. And we will also work with other organizations to do content provision here. We've met with the U of A Farm Extension about potentially being a partner here. So there is plenty of interest to be able to bring content and programming to the site.
What is the estimated cost to, do you have to to run an urban farm?
Oh, well, there would, the urban farm would not come with a cost. So the farmer would actually be able to, it would take a couple of years for the soils, even if we amend the soils, for the soils to get to the yield levels that they'd want. But the the urban farmers that we have to, they they would expect that they would be able to turn profit from the crops that they grow here.
As far as the operations of the facility, we'll have to come up with a staffing. Somebody on staff will have to oversee it and we'll have to come up with that.
So I I just make some comments. You know, I've been able to be part of the agricultural part of it for quite a few years. Jeff and I and other Jeff worked together on this. And I just think, you know, the concepts are great to resurrect and rehabilitate the building and bring it back into so that we could look at. You know, the Serine family that lived there, there were quite a few people lived in that eight to 900 square foot home, like 10.
It had the basement, so.
Yeah, it had the basement. But yeah, I mean, that was, when you go there, you see what 1890s living was like. It was all very compact living and and your house was out back, you know, that's how.
They were smaller people.
But but some of the overview that we talked about, you know, the farm to table, some of the experiences, the dining and everything that Jeff and I have bounced off. And I've been working with, you know, we have our local Mesa Public Schools. We've got our FFA programming that can come in and help support this. We have brand new, the Kerr Elementary School has now changed their name to Kerr Agricultural Learning Center. And that's an elementary school. They're going to keep their students there until eighth grade. And then they'll transfer from there to Westwood or wherever where they have ag programs. So that's there. We've been working and met with the University of Arizona Extension Office and providing programming and learning and all that there. So that that has the capacity to do that. And when then we talked about some grant funding as well. So there's a lot of pipelines here that we're working and massaging, but bringing this concept so we can actually use the acreage to do everything, I'm all I'm all in. So if you need my tractor, just let. I don't think it'll fit, but we'll try it.
Hit one run.
Not sure you want me driving your tractor, but I'll definitely try.
And and I'll just add for the soil amendment, that soil can produce today with minimal tillage. And you can tune it up. And that's how a lot of this Mesa land is dirt is you can just put in production right away. So look forward. And I'm willing to help as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any anything else in your presentation, Andrea?
Mayor, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know some of the items that were just brought up here, we'll circle back when we have bond discussions later because I know we talked about swimming pools and perhaps indoor.
Indoor facilities. We really need to talk about that in the bond election, swimming pools, I mean, parks. So yes, there'll be a whole park component that we'll be discussing. We have that master plan, Andrea, completed recently. And we'll be bringing some of that back. Maybe, yeah. I think we need to have that conversation. We need that master plan. I don't know the timing of that. And we'll we'll have a conversation. Yeah, that's something we can talk about. It may be.
Thank you. Great job. Can't say that the the event office with Roger also, that needs to be mentioned as a great success. So thanks. All right. Moving on, item three on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything to share? Mr. Freeman.
I'm gonna beat Julie to the puncher.
I was talking. I was trying to get in.
I know. That's why I went first. So we had a very successful neighborhood meeting last Saturday. We had a lot of people there. We were able to give away five trees and we fed 100 people or more there Saturday morning at St. Luke's Church. And it turned out very well. Tuesday, I was able to attend an event at ASU. It was called the Arizona Water Innovation Initiative at ASU. So there were panelists, the speakers. We talked about municipal, industrial, agricultural, and tribal water issues that will be affecting our state and how we're gonna collaborate and come together to resolve those issues. And there's about $45 million set aside for this initiative. So I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Spillsbury.
Now I'm going. Last Thursday, we, some of us attended the We Run Mesa event at Porter Elementary, which is where all six of my kids attended. So that was really fun. And thanks, of course, to Nicole Leba always for all of those events. And that was really fun. So many police and fire were out there and supporting those kids. And that night was the MPS, Mesa Public School Foundations Dinner and fundraiser that night. So that was an awesome event as well. I love the partnerships with Mesa Public Schools. Monday was College Activate. So we do the high school one and this was the college one. We had students there from NAU, U of A, ASU, five teams that talked about homelessness, opioid prevention, climate action, and workforce development, and got to listen to their presentations. And I got to emcee that event, which was really fun. And they wanted to say congratulations to the two students from U of A that won with their presentation on homelessness. Tuesday morning, the mayor and I went and did Java with Giles at the YMCA over there, the Farnsworth YMCA over by AT Still. And the chamber put on that event. And there were a lot of people there. We both got to speak at that. And then Wednesday morning, yesterday, was our first public meeting for da-da-da, the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline that's gonna tear up my district and part of Councilwoman Freeman's district for the next couple of years. But I wanted to thank Beth Huning, our city engineer, and her staff for meeting with me and going over all the details and and all of the disruption it's gonna cause and why they did what they did and and what they're gonna do and all. It's extremely complicated coordination on that project. And the most expensive project that the city of Mesa has on their books. So, you know, I feel really proud of that for my district. So but there will be several meetings in the future. You can go to mesalessons.com. There's a link that you can click right on to see all the information on the project and all the updates and when things will be starting and stuff like that. So they've made it very easy to find information on that project. So thank you.
Mr. Summers.
I am looking forward to several road projects being completed in my district and sending all the traffic barricades to your district. It's my gift to you.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to the Mesa Police Department, the the Parks Department. And Brookfield in East Mark, there is a fishing lake now in District Six. And we had a cops and bobbers event there. I want to thank Commander Spicer for all his hard work in the Superstition District and wish him the best of luck as he is being transferred, I believe, to the Central District. And welcome Commander Rash to Rash? Is that right? Yeah. Commander Rash will be coming into the district and I look forward to working with him. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Summers. Ms., go forth.
Yeah, we had a tree planting on Tuesday morning in District Five. And that we planted 20 trees in Skyline Park. Just wanted to say thank you again to our sponsors, Boeing and Shutterfly, West Coast Arborist, and Arizona Sustainability Alliance, as well as members that came to that and the high school students at Skyline who participated. It was a great event and obviously in furtherance of our Trees Are Cool initiative. And thank you especially to Donna DiFrancesco. I skip over that name every time. But she did such great work pulling this together in a short time. Also participated in a virtual public meeting for a Red Mountain Shared Use Path on Tuesday night. I wanted to just say thank you to transportation and engineering for and the folks that were involved in that. They did a great job explaining the project and answering questions and and going through that. So I I'm sure the District Five residents were grateful to hear about it and be informed about that new project coming online. Also, a shout out to Nicole Leba. Thank you for everything you do. And We Run Mesa, that was a great awards ceremony. She always is so great at thanking everybody involved and getting everybody out there, police and fire and all the other. It was a who's who of Mesa really that day. And then I also attended the A-plus award for Shepherd Junior High last Friday morning that that they received. So congratulations to them and their school principal, Jill Binza. She's doing a fantastic job over there. And I think that's, oh, I did attend a quarterly meeting at Los Indus on Monday or Tuesday. The the week is running together. But anyway, they are gathering stakeholders just from the area, police, Mesa Public Schools representatives, and some of the HOAs. And that was a great meeting with those different folks just talking about issues that are happening in Northeast Mesa. So thank you to them.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
I had a lot of the events that were mentioned, congratulations. They were great events in your district. So thank you for including me. On Sunday of this week, I had kind of firsthand exposure to the to the amphitheater situation. I was going to an except, an event on the, at the MAC called Accelerator for America where we we hosted folks from all over the country, a lot of mayors of very large cities. Mayor Gallego was the chairman of this organization. And I appreciated her bringing this this crowd on the light rail from downtown Phoenix out to Mesa, had a great tour of the of the MAC and got some great national exposure from that organization. But it was a little bit hard to get to because every parking space for miles around was taken because of a of a concert at the amphitheater. So it was just fun to have yet another weekend where this Mesa was was downtown Mesa was very, very active.
Were there weren't like empty parking spots everywhere?
There were not empty parking spots anywhere. A couple of other things this week, I was appreciated being invited to a stakeholder meeting with Governor Hobbs to talk about Proposition 400. We can, that continues to be a source of concern. We need to get something out of the legislature to get the the transportation infrastructure that we need back on the ballot so we can. we need back on the ballot so we can continue to have that. So please, talk to your legislators, but appreciated Governor Hobbs being engaged and inviting us to talk about that. Also Tuesday, was appreciated going to Bridget Peterson, Mayor Gilbert gave her state of the town address, appreciate our good relationship with Gilbert. And then last night, I was able to attend the Mesa College Promise culmination at Mesa Community College for the first two-year cohort, you know, as they've, we're now seeing kids graduate from Mesa Community College that were able to do that because of the Mesa College Promise. So that was, that was a very poignant and compelling thing to be a part of. It was, a lot of good things have come out of the Mesa College Promise, and so that's been fun to see. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future events look like?
Well, we're gonna ease up on the budget just a little bit. We have our department presentations, so we're gonna be preparing next week, next Thursday, to do kind of our budget wrap-up. So we've gone through all the departments to be presented. There's a few departments that didn't present, but we've got some items we want to highlight, so we'll bring those forward. If you go back to the document when we provided the proposed budget, there, most of them are still in there, so you'll still see that. Anyway, but just kind of letting council know we are getting to the end of this process with the budget. And so Monday, we will see you here for our study session. I think we're gonna get back to our regular time, 5:15 for the beginning of the study session. We do have one presentation on the All American Cities Award to kind of brief the council up to date on all those activities that will be coming up in June, so we'll see you then.
Very good, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you, we are adjourned.